Mr. Mahmood's not quite ready. Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting for January 30th, 2017. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on January 26th, 2017 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. We're going to move right into executive session, so I'm going to read the whereas's and the wherefores about that.
Let's do a roll call first.
Oh, let's do a roll call, okay. Mr. Mahmood, roll call.
Mrs. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Atifontex?
Here.
Mr. Cohen? Ms. Cooper?
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley? Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Mr. Hio?
Here.
And Mr. Gillette?
Here.
We have a corps.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mahmood. Whereas the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows: The matter to be discussed is negotiations with the Hillsborough Education Association. Also, I'm going to add to that a personnel matter and one other.
School security.
And school security. The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have a motion?
I move we go to an executive session.
Executive.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we're going to executive session. We plan to be back, we plan to be back at 7:30. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're back from executive session. Mr. Mahmood, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Ms. Atifontex?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Mr. Kidd? Here.
Mr. Hio?
Here.
And Mr. Gillette?
Here.
We have a corps.
Thank you. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We had some correspondence this past couple of weeks as listed, and I'd like to go directly to superintendent's report.
Thank you. Mr. Gillette, this is one of my favorite board meetings of the year. It's the night that we recognize excellence within our staff, our professional staff, and I'm excited to see so many people out tonight. We're also going to have a presentation from our middle school students as well focusing in on robotics, so a lot of fun things are happening this evening. Each year, it is my pleasure to help recognize the district's teachers and staff members who have been recognized by their students, parents, and their peers for making a difference in the lives of children throughout our community. The process of selecting the Teacher and Educational Services Professionals of the Year began in November, when the building principals accepted nominations for this honor. We have hundreds of amazing teachers and staff members in Hillsborough who work tirelessly on behalf of their students. In order to even be considered as an educator of note, the following must occur: The person must be an expert in their field who inspires students of all abilities and backgrounds; That person must actively collaborate with colleagues, students, and families to create a culture of respect and success; Demonstrate leadership and innovation in educational activities; Have the respect of students, parents, and colleagues; Demonstrate poise, eloquence, and the ability to maintain a demanding schedule. As you can see from these lists of "musts," earning the title of Teacher or Educational Services Professional is certainly no small task. This evening, I am pleased to hand the microphone over to our building principals, who will introduce you to the teachers and staff members we are honoring this evening. So please, join with me in welcoming to our podium the principal of Amsterdam School, Dr. Mary Ann Millet.
At this time, I would like to thank and congratulate all of the educators who awarded this prestigious award. It is with great pride and pleasure that I introduce Kelly Marion as Amsterdam School Educator of the Year. Kelly, come on up. Kelly's relationship with Hillsborough Schools began when she was a student, and she can be deemed as one of Hillsborough's finest. For a short time, we lent her to the University of Delaware, where she prepared to take her role as a Hillsborough educator. She was returned to us with all this newfound knowledge, a strong dedication to her craft, and an uncanny understanding of the young child. She impressed us right from the start. After teaching kindergarten for seven years, she was promoted to teach first grade in 2013. First grade is a critical year for children's learning, and it was a pivotal year for Kelly. It was during this time she made the step into the role of a teacher leader. From the start, Kelly dedicated herself to being the best teacher she could be. Through the years, she has shown a commitment to the education profession through her ongoing continuing studies. She received her Master's in Education from the College of New Jersey in 2013, and has enthusiastically shared strategies and positive teaching techniques with the school staff during faculty meetings, faculty workshops, and after-school chats. She has this unbeatable combination of innate talent and dedication to excellence. Her drive for excellence, enthusiasm for learning, and compassion for the young child continues well after the bell rings. She contributes regularly to our school community. Kelly works during her summer break to teach summer programs, attend professional workshops, and has provided home instruction for a student who is unable to attend school. She is a longtime member of Amsterdam School's Character Education Committee, and can often be found participating in school-wide assemblies and presentations. She does all of this with a dynamic enthusiasm and a positive energy. Kelly is clearly a teacher who is passionate about her work, and we are passionate about her type of teaching. Kelly is the teacher we all want to be. Kelly is the teacher you all want your child to have. With an endearing smile on her face and brain sticker in her hand, she is a blueprint for excellence in education. We are so proud that she is a member of the A-Team and certainly deserving this prestigious award. At this time, I'd like to introduce Sue Exteen, the principal of Hillsborough Elementary
Good evening. Congratulations to all of our award recipients. It is a pleasure to be in the company of all of these incredible educators. As the proud principal of Hillsborough Elementary School, I am truly honored to introduce you to the HES Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Serena Rutz. Mrs. Rutz is an outstanding health and PE teacher who has been in the Hillsborough School District all 20 years that she has been in education. Her enthusiasm and dedication is unmatched. Confucius once said, "Choose a job you love, and you will never have to work a day in your life." In other words, follow your passion. That is so true, and it completely sums up Mrs. Rutz. Hillsborough Elementary School has one of the most complicated delayed opening schedules due to the passion of Mrs. Rutz, and that's a good thing. It's a great thing. Mrs. Rutz works tirelessly to ensure, regardless of the weather or circumstances, and whenever humanly possible, that each and every child that she is supposed to see has PE in their day. Each day, she provides her students with an exciting learning experience designed to promote a lifelong healthy lifestyle. Here are a few of the extra activities that HES has due to Mrs. Rutz's passion. If you want any more information about any one of them, ask any of our HES stars, and you will see their faces light up. So here we go to name a few: Dark Gym, Jump Rope for Heart, Intramurals, Winter Wonderland, Tiny Town, Golf Town, Hockey Challenge, Field Day, School Spirit, Walk for Fitness, not to mention world-renowned Picto Caller. And for the ones that I missed, you can follow Mrs. Rutz on Twitter. Mrs. Rutz describes her role not as a job, but as having the privilege of doing something that is most rewarding. She states, "I get to teach my students to be healthy and active, and to love activity through a variety of skills and games. What can be more rewarding than that?" Mrs. Rutz's passion, dedication, and enthusiasm are unmatched. Her students adore her and return her enthusiasm the minute they walk into the gym. I couldn't be prouder than to have Mrs. Rutz represent Hillsborough Elementary School as our 2016-17 Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Mrs. Rutz. And now, I'd like to introduce the principal of Sunnymead School, Dr. Tammy Jakkins.
Good evening, everyone, and again, congratulations to all of our Teachers of the Year. We are so proud of all of you, and it is with great pride and pleasure that I introduce to you our Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Nancy Lovinsky. Nancy has been teaching for 32 years. Doesn't she look great? And she's taught both third and fourth grade for the last 16 years at Sunnymead School, and she's been truly a blessing to us and our students and our staff. Nancy is an extremely dedicated teacher, and her enthusiasm is absolutely contagious. Besides the custodian, Nancy is always the first to arrive very early in the morning. It is our life ambition to get to school before Nancy. We're still trying. Nancy sets high expectations for her students and makes every one of them feel special all at the same time. In reading some of the comments made by those who nominated Nancy, it's easy to see why she was chosen for this year's Teacher of the Year. One of her colleagues states, "Nancy is a teacher 24/7." Another comment, "Her students are close to her heart and her thoughts long after she leaves the building. She deeply cares about her students and truly knows every one of them." Nancy, you've made a significant impact on the lives of your students, as well as on the lives of all of the Sunnymead staff, parents, and community at large. Someone once said, "The mediocre teacher tells, the good teacher explains, the superior teacher demonstrates, and the great teacher inspires." Nancy, we want you to continue to walk in your greatness. Because of you, our students are great, and they're better for it. We appreciate you, we love you, we congratulate you, we acknowledge you, and we celebrate you for an honor well deserved. Thank you. And it is my pleasure to introduce the principal of Woodfern School, Mr. Steve Kerrigan.
Good evening, everyone. I also would like to thank all of the honorees for being such amazing people. There's a particularly amazing person that I'm going to call up right now, Woodfern's Teacher of the Year, Mr. Joe Dugan. I've had the opportunity to participate in Teacher of the Year selections for a few years now as principal of Woodfern, and it's fascinating because you never know how it's going to go. Even though Dr. Schiff laid out all of the requirements and the criteria, the conversations that we have based on who... Joe, you can come closer. It's okay. This will be virtually painless, I promise. The conversations that we have and the things that are mentioned, it snowballs. And this one is particularly, is a particularly interesting year because Joe didn't start out as wanting to be a teacher. Joe started out in marketing, right? It was at the Philadelphia College of Textiles and Science. He was a marketing, worked in marketing for seven years, and the moment that changed his professional life was when a friend of his, a fifth-grade teacher, invited him in to help out in her classroom on a Mother's Day project. And that was when he realized that his true calling was to be a teacher. So he went back to school, went to Holy Family, received a master's degree in elementary education, worked for, in Bristol Borough for a short time before coming to Hillsborough in 2000. Joe has been a kindergarten teacher, has been, and is now a second-grade teacher, and one of the, one of the best things that I can say is that, as I mentioned before, as we were talking about all the different things that make up a great teacher, Joe does all those things with an amazingly quiet confidence and unassuming nature. So much so, that as we were talking as a committee, we realized, boy, Joe does a lot of stuff. And we never realized, because Joe just, that's how he does it. He is, he is consistent, he is outstanding, he is one of the most celebrated teachers at Woodfern based on... Quick story. I came into the office one day, and on the counter by the mailboxes were all of these wooden dinosaurs. And I had to ask, what's, why? What is this? A student that Joe had in second grade, who is now, was it in high school, or is it... Yeah, in high school, took a lesson that Joe had given. It stuck with him, and he has applied that, applied that now, and continues his passion of learning, and continues his passion of wanting to build and create, and he just thought it would be nice if Mr. Dugan saw that, that he made an impact on his life by dropping off some things to call back to being in second grade. So between Joe's dedication to his students, between his, his drive to do all that is best for them always, and his quiet help at things like Dr. Seuss Night, Dr. Seuss Day, and all the different things, I couldn't be prouder to present Joe Dugan as Woodfern's Teacher of the Year. I would now like to introduce principal of Triangle School, Mrs. Lisa Heisel.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to introduce you to Triangle School's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Courtney Kabaski. Courtney has been teaching at Triangle School since 2009, when she joined us as a part-time resource teacher, and we looked very hard to find a full-time position for her when she moved into the Learning and Language Disabled class, where she's been for the last six years. Courtney has the ability to make children feel special, and to know that no matter how hard it is to learn, they will always be able to succeed in her class. In addition to her classroom duties, for the last few years, she has been a member of our Sunshine Committee. And those of you who have ever been to Triangle School knows that the feeling when you walk in the building is that you are happy and want to be there, and our Sunshine Committee, and Courtney in particular, helps to make that morale feel really positive. In addition, she was most recently named the 98.3 Teacher Who Makes Magic. She's a member of an educational family, and her sister, who was also a teacher, was also Teacher of the Year, so now you get to do it too. Ms. Kabaski is a lifelong resident of Hillsborough. She went to Immaculata High School after Amsterdam School, and then went on to Maris College, where she got her bachelor's degree in education. She's touched the lives of a lot of students in our building, and we love her, and we're really proud of you, so congratulations. And I'm still here because I am going to also introduce you to one of the two educational support professionals of the elementary schools, and that would be our Speech and Language Pathologist at Triangle School, Mrs. Nicole Shaheenian. Mrs. Shaheenian has been at Triangle School since 2008, when I joined the staff at Triangle School as well. She works with students of all grades, and when we had a preschool program, she was the go-to person there, and even went to Sunnymead for a while to work with this, with those young children as well. The people who nominated her described her as selfless, talented, knowledgeable, kind, and devoted, a person who is an advocate for her students as well as a help to her colleagues, and I think that definitely sums up how we all feel about her. In addition to her classroom duties, Mrs. Shaheenian is our director extraordinaire. If you've ever visited the Triangle School website, you've seen links to movies that we've done. She's our director, she's our writer, she's our filmmaker, she does anything that has to be done for video, and just about anything else that we ask of her. She's a resident of Somerville, where she lives with her husband and two children, who are here tonight as well, and we are very proud to have you, and we love you too, so. Now I'm going to introduce Ms. Jody Howe, the principal of Woods Road School.
Good evening. Thank you. At this time, Woods Road is proud to announce our Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Mary Beth Jordan. There she is. Mrs. Jordan is a graduate of the Mary Wood College with a degree in Special Education. She's also duly certified in elementary education and nursery. She has been in the field of education for 30 years, and has spent the last eight and a half years in Hillsborough Township as our preschool teacher. Ms. Jordan loves to collaborate with her peers, her teaching assistant, and specialist. Her positive attitude and communication skills have enabled our preschool team to function very effectively and efficiently. She goes above and beyond to communicate with each and every one of her parents on a daily basis. Ms. Jordan's, excuse me, Ms. Jordan offers her support and resources to not only our preschool teachers, but also to our teachers in all content areas. As one parent said, "To sum it up, finding out your child's teacher assignment was Miss Mary Beth was like getting the golden ticket." Ms. Jordan is most proud that her classroom is a happy place, where her children feel comfortable, respected, and love to learn. Quote, "That which I learn with pleasure, I learn for a lifetime." And I too am still up here because I have the other co-educational services professional of the year. Could we have Mrs. Megan Ludwig come on down? Mrs. Ludwig has been in education for 18 years, and she's been in Hillsborough Township for the last 12 years as our school psychologist. Mrs. Ludwig completed her undergraduate education at the University of Delaware, where she received a Bachelor of Arts degree in psychology with a concentration in education. She then completed her graduate degree from Seton Hall University and received a Master's degree in education and psychological studies, and an educational specialist degree in school and community psychology. Mrs. Ludwig helps our students succeed both academically, socially, behaviorally, and emotionally. She has the unique ability to put parents at ease even when the most challenging, even when discussing the most challenging information. Mrs. Ludwig goes out of her way to ensure that parents understand the Child Study Team process, they understand the information, and of course, testing results. Mrs. Ludwig collaborates with her colleagues, with parents, and other professionals to create a safe, healthy, and supportive learning environment for all of our students. Her colleagues look to her for her expertise, for guidance, and I have to say, Mrs. Ludwig shared with me that she's most proud that she gets to work with students with disabilities and their families to help them understand that their child's strengths and weaknesses... Excuse me, to help them understand their child's strengths and weaknesses while helping them reach their full potential. So with that, congratulations, Mrs. Ludwig, on behalf of our staff. And at this time, I would like to introduce the principal of Otten Road, Mr. Christopher
Good evening, everyone. I have the privilege of actually introducing three individuals tonight, so don't start playing the music as they do in the Golden Globes if I go a little too long. First, I'd like to invite up Rita Misakitis, Otten Road Teacher of the Year. How about a round of applause for Rita? So a little background about Rita. Rita graduated from Holy Family University in Pennsylvania with a Bachelor of Arts degree in Early Childhood Education. After graduation, she worked for 10 years as an early childhood educator with the Fox Chase Cancer Center in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. While working at Fox Chase, Rita went back to school to earn her master's degree in Special Education from Arcadia University. Following her time at Fox Chase, Rita joined Hillsborough Public Schools, and in her first year, she split her time working as a special education teacher at Woodfern Elementary, and at the time, Otten Road Elementary School. The next, the next year, as Otten Road opened its doors as an intermediate school, and for the last 15 years, Rita has worked as a fifth-grade special, special education math teacher. Along with her work during the school day, Rita works as a tutor for Hillsborough's Extended School Year Program in the summer. Rita will also often help out in providing home instruction to students, and she serves as a mentor to new teachers. When asked about what inspires her about her work as a teacher, Rita shared that it's the opportunity to connect with her students in a way that can help motivate them to do their very best. Rita went on to explain that when she was growing up, she had some negative experiences learning math. As a result of those experiences, Rita believes that she's able to relate to her students and to turn their negative feelings about math into more positive ones. It is this dynamic in the classroom and her unsung consistency that have been so beneficial to her students' growth and success. I want to conclude with a short excerpt from a nomination form from one of Rita's colleagues. I quote, "While there are many incredible teachers that I interact with daily, Rita is one that stands out as an example of excellence. Rita is a teacher who quietly works hard every day and doesn't look for recognition or praise. It seems as if her students' success is her reward. Over the years, we have shared many students, and some of them have stated that they feel as if they are strong in math because of, because of what Miss Misakitis believes in them." Please join me once again, Ms. Rita Misakitis, Aris Teacher of the Year. And now I'd like to ask to come up, Ms. Patty Brower, Otten Road Educational Services Professional Patty's worked in Hillsborough School District for the last 18 years, and is a resident of Hillsborough for the last 24. All three of her children have gone through our schools, and her husband Frank is a, has a dental practice in town. Patty graduated from Fairleigh Dickinson University with a bachelor's degree in elementary education and a reading specialist certification. Upon graduation, she taught sixth grade in Madison. However, as it was the time of, the era of school closings, she entered the business world, working in the information technology consulting field. She held many positions over her 13 years in business, the last being a senior vice president of Human Resources and Internal Affairs. Sounds really serious.
It was.
When the company was sold, Patty accepted a maternity leave position as a fourth-grade class in Hillsborough Elementary School, and then went right to school at night to get her master's degree in counseling from Rider University. When Otten Road Elementary School opened up in 1999, she was hired as a school counselor. Patty continued her education at Rider University and earned her educational specialist degree in counseling, as well as her Director of Guidance certification. She is national, she is a nationally certified counselor and a licensed associate counselor. Currently, she is pursuing her licensed professional counselor certification and is an adjunct professor in the Counseling Graduate Education Department at Rider University. This is her 12th year of teaching and supervising counseling graduate students for the, for the school setting, as well as clinical mental health setting. She also serves on the Rider Education Advisory Board. Of the many wonderful roles, roles that Patty fulfills at Otten Road, an area of special interest to her is our advisory program, where she coordinates school-wide schedule and activities that enable students and staff to work together to meet a host of character education topics. Each Friday morning, we look forward to be able to slow down the school day just a little bit... bit and afford our students time to improve their social skills, problem solve, and work toward building a strong school community. And we greatly appreciate all of Patty's efforts in keeping this program strong and vibrant. I'll conclude also with Patty with a short quote from a nomination that we received. And I quote, "I am fortunate to have worked alongside Mrs. Brower for the past eight years. I call her not only my colleague but a friend. She listens without judgment and she has a strong sense of compassion for all. Her kind-hearted and empathetic demeanor is truly admirable. She has helped me with students countless times, offering advice and support. Mrs. Brower not only offers us thoughtful solutions, she follows through and follows up." Please join me once again congratulating Patty Brower, Educational Services Professional And I also, as again, I also have the honor to introduce one more individual. I'd like to speak on behalf of Ms. Linda Geroian, the Educational Support Professional of the Year. Please come on up, Linda. Yes, so Linda was recently named the Educational Support Professional for the Year for Hillsborough School District, but I also want to pause a moment and say she was also named the Somerset County Educational Support Professional of the Year. So have a round of applause for that. This important award honors the essential role that all of our instructional assistants perform each and every day. Linda exemplifies the dedication and professionalism of all educational support professionals who endeavor to maintain the quality of our schools and to ensure that students' success. Throughout the course of her career as an instructional assistant, Linda has played an important role within our schools. She is quick to go the extra mile to support her students, ensuring that they are successful in all aspects of their life. Linda connects with every student through their individual interests, even going as far as researching quantum physics when one student displayed an interest. She is a highly respected member of our school community whose dedication extends beyond the classroom. Linda is a resident of Hillsborough for the last 25 years. She's worked as an educational support professional for the last 18, 18 years, serving at Otten Road Intermediate School, Amsterdam Elementary School, and Hillsborough High School. Prior to working in Hillsborough Public Schools, Linda was a vice president at Merrill Lynch in their commodity and trading office. Again, sounds very serious and important. She earned her bachelor's degree from Stony Brook University in New York and in economics and anthropology. Again, once again, I will conclude by sharing just a wonderful quote by one of her colleagues that says, "Whether in the classroom, with her students or outside the classroom with her colleagues, Linda exemplifies what is meant to be an instructional assistant. Her warmth and compassion are shown on a daily basis and we do not know what we would do without her." Once again, please join me congratulating Linda Geroian, Educational Support Professional of the Year. And now I'd like to introduce the principal of Hillsborough Elementary, Dr. Joseph Trabowski.
It's okay, Mr. Carey, unless my position has suddenly changed. I'm pleased to be here representing Hillsborough Middle School. So your position is secure too as well. It is my pleasure to represent Hillsborough Middle School this evening and to welcome up here to join me, my Teacher of the Year, Christina Simons, please. Christina is a graduate of Johns Hopkins University and she has her degrees in English and secondary education. Her teaching career began in 2002 as a teacher of English and language arts for seventh grade at the middle school, now teaching eighth grade with our school. Over the last 15 years, Ms. Simons has developed not only phenomenal instruction in the classroom but some unique and special extracurricular programs that inspire students' creativity and their community activism. In 2005, she established the annual Earth Day Environmenters Club by which HMS students develop and lead elementary students from around the district in celebrating Earth Day with hands-on activities centered around environmental awareness and appreciation. In 2006, she established the HMS Shakespeare Society, recruiting students to take on the challenge of performing, not reading, mind you, performing works of Shakespeare and being the very first middle school in the state of New Jersey to enter the Shakespearean Festival at Drew University. Since then, our Shakespeare Society has promoted Bard in the Borough, a Shakespearean outreach program for elementary students each spring, and most recently added the Edgar Allan Symposium for Hillsborough in addition to their annual preparations for the New Jersey Shakespeare Festival each year at Drew. When I asked Christina, "What is it that inspires her work?", she pointed out to the many images around her classroom that contain famous people and famous quotes, not only of famous individuals but of her students as well interspersed with all of this. And she said to me, "I think it's important that we surround ourselves with the images and messages of the heroes in our lives that remind us each day of the energy and the passion and the hard work that it takes to achieve a sense of fulfillment in life. Growing up, I was privileged to have many special teachers in my life and I've always appreciated the sacrifices and challenges of teaching. It is a hard job, but it's the being hard that makes it great. It's that being hard that gives every teacher a chance to be a hero and we must never lose sight of that. Never lose sight of the strength and the brilliance and the joy that we project for the young people around us who so desperately need heroes at this point in their lives. Teaching gives me that opportunity and I'm proud to do it with all my heart." For her incomparable work in the classroom, for her creativity and passion to bring forward new enrichment activities for students that extend the love of literacy to all children, and for her truly dedicated and inspired hard work each and every day that makes her a hero to so many, HMS is proud to recognize Christina Simons as our Teacher of the Year. And now I'm pleased to introduce our Educational Services Professional of the Year for Hillsborough Middle School, our school nurse, Ms. Krista Williams. Please join me. Turn to the camera. Come on closer to him. Thanks. Krista has 22 years of experience as a, as a nurse, I should say, beginning with her work as a cardiac unit nurse at Hackensack University Medical Center. She would later serve as head nurse for a local eye surgery center. And in 2009, when I asked her to be our school nurse, she looked at me a little, you know, uncertain if she could actually do the job. I said, "But you've, you've worked in a cardiac care, you've worked eye surgery." I said, "You're right, this may be a challenging position for you." But she took the job anyway and we are, we are overjoyed. She brings a special care to over 1,200 students and 150 faculty and staff members each and every day. But beyond these many daily responsibilities, Krista Williams is also an integral member of our crisis management team. She works on our Intervention and Referral Services Committee, working with me and my faculty to address the needs of at-risk students on a daily basis. Additionally, Ms. Williams heads our School Wellness Committee and she provides training to faculty on vital health topics as well as sponsors school-wide activities and information sessions promoting healthy living for all of us. At every opportunity, Krista Williams works tirelessly to help students become more informed and more independent regarding their own self-care. For her dedicated service to our school and community and the gentle care that she dispenses every day that keeps students safe, healthy, and ready for school, we are proud to recognize Krista Williams as our Educational Services Professional of the Year. And now it's my pleasure to introduce Karen Binger, principal of the high school.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Each year as the nomination season opens for this, for these recognitions, I always marvel, how is it possible that we're going to find somebody who hasn't already been called upon and hasn't already been nominated and hasn't already been celebrated in some way? And I'm thrilled to say, as I look out here, I've been in the district for 18 years and new faces come every year, and I think that says an awful lot about the teaching and Educational Services Professional staff in Hillsborough Township School District. We have absolutely outstanding people here working with our children and I celebrate and congratulate all of them. I am however, especially pleased to introduce two. I'm going to start first with Tracy Jamison. It is my honor to introduce you to Ms. Tracy Jamison, the Hillsborough High School Teacher of the Year. Ms. Jamison, an HHS alumna, came home to us in the spring of 1999 after 10 years teaching elsewhere and joined our special education and science staff. Over the course of her career, she has advised several extracurricular activities, every single one of which I think has carved an individual niche in the hearts of the kids who have been involved. Notably, Interact, which is an organization entirely premised upon charitable work, the Yu-Gi-Oh Club, which is Yu-Gi-Oh, the Red Cross Club, because yes, she will take your blood, and she is currently the advisor of the PALS, excuse me, Club, which is Peers Assisting Learning Support, which is a combined organization for regular education and special education students. She was also awarded the New Jersey Audubon Society Environmental Education Award. Ms. Jamison is known for her work ethic, her constant smile, and wearing a tiara weekly on what she has dubbed Tiara Tuesday. And if you come to the high school tomorrow, which is Tuesday, she will be wearing a tiara. This is nothing new for her. Every Tuesday, and she's gotten other people to join her, which is even better. One of the students who nominated her, Matthew Rorardi, stated, "Ms. Jamison brings loads of positive energy to every room she walks into or hallway she walks down. Outside of school, Ms. Jamison is a church choir director and very possibly never sleeps." Congratulations to Ms. Tracy Jamison, the HHS Teacher of the Year. And it is now my honor to introduce Mr. Gil Pollardi, the Educational Services Professional Mr. Pollardi has been at Hillsborough High School since 2006, working as a student assistance counselor and co-advisor for sources of strength and peer mentoring. The first one is a support system of students who reach out to other students to provide comfort, direction, a contact to a responsible adult if they need help with something, and peer mentoring, which is a program where our juniors and seniors mentor our incoming freshmen. He has also worked with Push and Rebel, which is also an outreach program that talks about healthy lifestyles, which the outreach goes into the younger schools in the district. He has also shared his love of music by playing in assorted Unplugged and Battle of the Bands concerts. And don't be surprised if you walk by his office and he's playing piano or at, playing guitar or whatever the case may be, whatever will connect with the kids, he's there. Mr. Pollardi is known for his sense of humor, his ability to provide students with a haven where they can express themselves and work through their concerns productively, his sense of humor, and for being an attentive ear and voice of reason when students are struggling. He's also known for his sense of humor. The family that nominated him stated, "It is obvious that he is well-liked by the long line outside of his office. It is truly a safe zone. Mr. Pollardi goes above and beyond to check in on the students whom he has worked with and always has their best interests in mind." Congratulations to Mr. Gil Pollardi, the HHS Educational Services Professional of And once again, congratulations to all of the recipients this evening.
Thank you. On behalf of all of our administrative team as well as the Board of Education, I just want to express to all of our honorees, thank you so much for your dedication and your commitment to the children of Hillsborough Township School. You not only honor them, you honor yourself, you honor your school, you honor your district, you honor your community. Congratulations. Before we break for a reception in the honor of our honorees, we do have some students that you may hear buzzing in the back of our auditorium. Tonight, we're going to be recognizing the Hillsborough Middle School Robotics Team. And to introduce the team, I invite back to the podium, principal of Hillsborough Middle School, Dr. Joseph Trabowski.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Members of the team will kindly come on down here. Make sure you get on camera. Make sure that award gets on camera, please. A few years ago, it was my pleasure to shine a light on a number of activities and efforts at HMS that were designed to enhance learning in the areas of science and technology, engineering, and mathematics. At that time, I brought up the members of the HMS Science Olympiad Team along with the Robotics Team, and we extended honors as well to our girls in Engineering Math and Science Club, our Math League Team, and so forth. But tonight, it's my pleasure to bring back once again their Robotics Team for Hillsborough Middle School to honor some of their recent achievements and also, perhaps more importantly, to give them a platform to present their research project, which I believe deserves a much wider audience. For many years now, HMS has been part of the first LEGO Robotics League. The first program focuses not only on computer science, robotics, and mechanical engineering, but incorporates research and design solutions, addressing contemporary issues in the broader context of science, technology, and society as well. This year's team has distinguished itself in a number of ways. At one of the largest middle-level robotics competitions in the region, the Borough Blast that was hosted by our very own high school back in November, this team won the award for Best Mechanical Design for their robot, and they advanced to the state competition that was held more recently in Mount Olive. There, the team placed second with special recognition for their outstanding research project in relation to this year's science and society theme, Animal Allies. So at this time, what I'd like to do is introduce the coach and advisor for the team, Mrs. McManus, who will in turn introduce the members of the team, including some volunteers from the high school as well who have helped mentor our kids, and together they will share with you their project. Please welcome Mrs. McManus.
Well, first I'd like to, first I'd like to introduce Coach Glenn Galovich, who has been helping me for years, and without him, we would not be able to earn our Mechanical Design Award, for he provides amazing guidance. And we have one high school mentor with us today, Kelsey Galovich. And here's our team.
Wow.
Dad.
Lydia.
Richie.
Emily.
Niall.
Trea.
All right. So before we get going, I just want to tell you a little bit about FLL, because as an FLL team, when people hear we're robotics, they go, "Oh, robots." And then they get in the club and they're like, "Oh, there's a project?" So let me just tell you really quickly about it, because it's actually an amazing program and I wouldn't want to do it any other way. The first component of FLL is the core values, where they learn how to collaborate and communicate effectively with our team and other people. Then we have the robot game, which is the favorite part. Students design, build, test, and program their own robot using LEGO Mindstorms technology while applying real-world math and science concepts. And then we have the project, which might be my favorite part, where we research a real-world challenge facing scientists today and develop an innovative solution as a team.
Core values are a set of beliefs that help guide us in working together as a team and set FLL apart from other robotics programs.
We learned that friendly competition and mutual gain are not separate goals and that helping each other is a foundation of teamwork.
Core values are important to us because they strengthen the bonds between our teammates and establish a strong foundation for teammates to learn and grow with the guidance from
Core values remind our team that we are here to have fun.
Our robot stinger. Although our robot competes against others at the tournament, our goal is to make the best best robot we can while strategically choosing missions that have the right balance of difficulty and potential point value.
Our robot stinger is durable, efficient, and balanced. Our robot has solid construction and is built with beams that provide solid connections. Its minimal moving parts are to streamline our design and prevent the need for repairs during our competition.
Our attachment to refrigerator claw. This claw assists in several missions on the field. To give it more torque, we added gears.
One of the programming features we had to think about was timing. We started the program beginning, bringing the claw down by degrees, but this proved inefficient and unreliable, because the claw would get stuck. We decided to use timing in our programming because it proved to work reliably and consistently.
There is no sound, by the way.
Here you can see our robot going up to the refrigerator, and now you can see the claw opening up the refrigerator to release the food. We use timing in this because the amount of seconds required makes the claws go up and down for the right amount of time to get the food.
So in our food distribution mission, we not only have to collect the food pieces, but also redistribute them to the four animals on the field. To do so, we drew inspiration from the mechanism in a refrigerator, where as the pieces fall down, the bottom piece is being pushed out. So as you can see up there, our attachment is on the right, located on the right of our robot stinger, and the food pieces are stored in the red-and-white striped cage on the attachment. So the way how we push out our pieces in the attachment is by utilizing the large motor at the bottom of the robot, where we attach gears and axles, which are then assembled in a way where we can push out the pieces in a locomotive motion. We also used beams instead of axles in order to strengthen our attachment overall. So as you can see here again, our robot is leaving base. It's squaring off on the side of the rope, on the side of the wall in order to ensure accuracy. It's now feeding, it just fed our first animal, the gorilla. It's now following the line in order to complete the service dog mission, which is to knock over the barricade, and it's continuing on. It's going to turn right now and square off again and continue on feeding the next two animals.
So the project is to identify a specific problem in the way that humans interact with animals and develop an innovative solution.
So Einstein once said that if bees were to disappear off the face of the globe, then man would only have four years of life left. No more bees, no more pollination, no more plants, no more animals, no more man. We were already concerned about habitat loss, but after stumbling across that quote, it really got us thinking of how important bees are to us.
Pollinators, including some 20,000 species of wild bees, contribute to the growth of fruit, vegetables, many nuts, and flowering plants. Plants dependent pollination make up 35% of global crop production volume, with a value of just $577 billion annually.
The U.S. government has deemed seven species of bees on endangered species list. That's eerie. It seems that Einstein's prediction about bees may become a reality. Even though the government's trying to help, they can't do alone. Imagine all of the accomplishments of mankind, all of it wasted if we turned our heads and allowed bees to die. It would truly mean the end of humanity as we know it.
What causes bees to disappear?
CCD, also known as colony collapse disorder, is when the bees leave the hive for no apparent reason. No dead bodies of the bees can be found. CCD is caused by many factors.
Nana cottonoids, another name for insecticide, are believed to interfere with the bee's memory and sensory ability, making them unable to forage for food.
The insecticide in the U.S. may have decreased over the course of years, but still, we use way too much of it.
Commercial businesses and everyday people are using these deadly pox. You could go to Home Depot and buy your own share of human decimation.
Parasitic invasions such as regular mite infestations threaten the domestic bee population, causing beekeepers to lose up to 85% of their colonies.
All in all, CCD is caused by diseases and stress, conditions exacerbated by an inadequate source of food and nutrition.
From what we've gathered about bees, we've concluded that we need to help them, specifically our native bees like miner bees, digger bees, mason bees, and many more.
So the question becomes, how do we do that?
We look to see what others are doing to help the bees. The majority of our sources are just in a bee garden that acts as a nectar mine in a pesticide-free location.
We've decided to use the idea of a bee garden and intentionally use native flowers.
We found a list of over 700 plants native to Somerset County. From there, we narrowed down the list to only 12 plants.
Each set consists of four varieties that bloom in three seasons. We decided to use native plants because they're naturally acclimated to the surrounding environment, and they require less maintenance.
Since the native plants we've chosen are also perennials, they'll be able to come back year after year and year after year in order to sustain the bees' future needs.
The idea of using native plants came from Duke Farms, a living habitat that emulates ecological stewardship. They describe it as the conscientious planning and implementation of best management practices of natural resources and natural lands.
By mirroring Duke Farms, we can show that their use of ecological stewardship can be achieved to help the bee.
We found out that our township of Hillsborough is owing to be bee-friendly, and Anven Park is introducing bee sanctuaries to help preserve species.
We discovered that our local community college, RVCC, has been named the first bee-friendly college in New Jersey. Inspired by this, we hope to become the first bee-friendly middle school in New Jersey.
But wait, there's more. Instead of just placing a bee garden on the school property, we are planning to open up towards educators to be used as a learning garden, a spot that appeals to tactile learning.
Locals will be able to explore and walk on the path that meanders through a garden.
Everyone can explore the garden and learn how to recreate it within their own homes from the informational signs posted throughout the garden.
We took an aerial view of the swale near our school. We are talking to a landscape architect who will help us plan out our garden.
Over time, our learning garden will encourage an increase in the bee population.
Bees are able to remember the best spots to pollinate, and where others have been very successful.
With the variety of native bees, we can ensure that bees will visit our garden.
Even though we're only using a small part of the swale, the plants will spread and increase over time, covering more area year after year.
It will truly be a pollinator's paradise.
In order to learn more and improve our project, we consulted with our principal, Dr. Trabowski, Mr. Joe Jeffs, an apiarist, Ms. Tanya Solakowski, and Mr. Clifford Brack of Duke's Farms, and Mrs. Simons in the Environment and Discovery School.
Thank you for your time.
Let's get buzzing!
So before you start asking questions, we do have a plan on how to pay for this. We are applying for grants. Duke's Farm is making a sizable donation of native plants to us as well. We'll be going out there a few more times to talk to them and learn from them, and it's something that we're going to be working on over time. We'll begin it now, and since I'm probably never leaving Hillsborough School District, I will help maintain and make sure my robotics team always maintains it. So it's something that we're very excited about. So thank you so much for your support and having us here tonight.
Very impressive students and a very impressive program, really wonderful job. I asked the board if we could take a brief recess to allow board members to actually congratulate our honorees as well as meet our students, and we have some cake and cookies in the back to celebrate tonight's event. So with that, I ask for the board's unanimous consent for a brief recess.
We're taking a recess. All right, we're coming back from a brief recess. We're going to continue with the superintendent's report. Dr. Schiff.
Thank you, President Gillette. I'd like to share a few more items of good news for the board as well as for the community. Hillsborough Township was recently ranked 23rd on NEACH.com's annual list of best school districts in New Jersey. The website ranked 10,364 school districts throughout the country. The 2017 best school district ranking is based upon rigorous analysis of key statistical and millions of reviews from students and parents using data from the U.S. Department of Education. Ranking factors include state test scores, college readiness, graduation rates, SAT/ACT scores, teacher quality, public school district ratings, and more. Congratulations to our students, teachers, staff, and administrators, who have all earned this award on our behalf. Also, congratulations goes out to On Road Intermediate Schools, John McAvady, and Triangle Schools, Courtney Koboski, who were recently named as two of MAGIC 98.3 and NJEA Teachers Who Make Magic class of 2017. This program recognizes outstanding teachers for their important contributions to society. Both JP and Courtney will be honored at an awards banquet held on April 19th in Edison, New Jersey. Congratulations to JP and Courtney, and thank you all for all of the things that you do for your students. Thank you. And now, tonight, we've invited our interim Buildings and Grounds Director, Mr. Patrick Gallagher, here tonight to give the board and the community an update on some facilities issues, including temperature, heating, and ventilation throughout the district. Mr. Gallagher.
Hello, board members. Thank you for having me today. I just want to give everybody an update. We've had a long weekend. We attacked the temperature issues pretty hard. Happy to say we got through today and the last couple, the last week or so, with very minimal temperature issues, very few calls, if any, today. So I was very proud of what we've done. The district has been working with us very closely to bring additional resources to the table, and we've been really working hard to make sure that we get these temperature control issues under control. So I just wanted to give everybody an update. We continue to work with the district with outside vendors and support. Superintendent, BA, and the rest of the board obviously have been supporting us, so I just want to let everybody know that I think we're over the hump. I think we're at a good place now. We figured out what some of the challenges were, and I think you're seeing, you're reaping the benefits of that temperature control program being rectified. So I'd like to open to any questions anybody might have. I'd be happy to answer any awards questions.
Well, I just want to say that Mr. Gallagher did come to the operations committee meeting on January 19th.
Yes, sir.
And already by that time, we had things pretty much well in hand, and that you made a number of steps by that time. So I appreciate that. Do board members have any other specific questions about any of the issues, Mr. Gallagher? No? I mean, is there anything else you want to add to this report?
I did want to mention, I know, Mr. Gallagher, you had talked a little bit about some of the mechanical issues that we were addressing as well. So the things we're working with Aramark and a couple of the mechanical issues in some of our buildings, and I do appreciate the work you have put in. I know you've put in a solid couple of weeks, coming in at 5:00 a.m. and leaving all night, all hours during the night. I appreciate that. I know you put a lot of time into it, but I do, I do think that the board is going to be addressing some of the mechanical issues. In the future, we're going to have to address sort of how we're going to handle some of that, including some of the preventive maintenance issues that had arisen as well.
There are definitely some opportunities for training with the staff as far as preventive maintenance, and we already started aggressively going after those, putting those protocols onto a calendar so that they can't be missed in the future.
Anything else, Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. We appreciate that.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, before I throw it over to President Gillette to discuss approval of minutes, we had our high school orchestra perform recently, and two of our board members attended it, and maybe they would like to comment about how impressive it was. Ms. Bogachewski?
It was quite an honor to see the students from grades six through 12th to collaborate along with very talented Mrs. Petraselli and quite the orchestra extravaganza, I guess. And at the end, she put all of the grades together for one huge ensemble, and it was really, really spectacular, especially since this was a sixth-grade class joining all the other classes. That was their first year in full range of orchestra. So congratulations to her and everyone else that was involved.
Thank you. And at this point, I'll turn it back to the president.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. I think we have some minutes. We have two sets of minutes that were in your packet and online for board members. So I'd like to hear, take a motion for approval of the January 9th, 2017 public meeting minutes. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passed. Motion passed, okay. So let's take a look at the January 9th, 2017 executive session minutes. Do I hear motion? And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passed. All right, thank you. We're going to move to committee reports. We had a few of the committees met. I don't know if all four met. Not governed, right? We have a few of the committee reports. So are we ready to go? Mrs. Haas will start us off with the Education Committee.
Thank you very much. We had a very good meeting of the Education Committee on January 17th. We discussed a review of the mathematics curriculum. These were just very, very minor tweaks of various grades three, four, and five in the mathematics curriculum. We had a discussion about changing our meeting dates and times. We also had a very lengthy discussion of the very, very preliminary 2017, 2018 budget in the areas of special ed, technology, and curriculum and instruction. And because it's so preliminary, we're going to discuss it again in February, so I'll have more to report at that time. But I would like to thank all of our district professionals who attended the meeting. We're very fortunate to have such wonderful people working for us, who are very conscious of moving our district ahead at the same time as keeping a very good eye on the budget. So I just wanted to appreciate them publicly for that. And that's basically it from Education. Oh, oh, one other thing. Ms. Trujillo and I attended a training session for our teachers. English Language Arts is going to be the subject for our new curriculum development next year as we go on our five-year cycle. And Sheila Cooper, who's the supervisor of English, brought in these trainers and brought in all of the people who do reading support in our schools, and the people who run this program gave us a very impressive program, which showed how reading comprehension could be improved and various other factors that contribute to reading comprehension, such as vocabulary and other things. So anyway, I just wanted to express our appreciation for being invited to join in on that. It showed us what our teachers are facing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Steve, are you, are you set for HR Committee?
I'm sorry, the HR Committee met, I think, the same day, the 17th, and Ms. Haas was kind enough to sub in for Ms. Bogachewski, so we were at full strength. And we had a preliminary report on the HR budget, on the total budget, and we discussed, well, the presentations were made based upon the requests that all the buildings had their high, medium, and low requests. We discussed them at some length, and that's about all I could really report on, because right now, we're just discussing it in terms of preliminary. And then we also had a discussion regarding future agenda item regarding the review of coaches. Instead of waiting for the annual June review and recommendations, that we would be more cyclical and reflect the seasonal coaches. That way, any, well, to put it in simple terms, we're having a difficult time filling positions because we don't have enough time, quote unquote, so we need to have as much time as possible to give the AD and principals and the administration. So we need to have as much time as possible, give the AD and principals and the administration more time to fill those positions. So that's going to trim up, and Mr. Volpe is going to help us with that. And that's all I got to say. Oh, thank you, Ms. Centafanti, for chairing the HR committee the last few years. It's big feet that I got to fill, and I don't like it.
Big feet.
But we ran a pretty decent meeting. That's what Dr. Schiff said, anyway, so he was brown-nosing me, I think.[625.41][625.41](LAUGHTER). He said we ran a really good meeting. We did have a very thick meeting. We ran over budget.
A little bit over. Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to report on the, I'll report on the operations committee. We met January 19th. We also had some preliminary budget discussions. We, notwithstanding the fact that we did some lead testing in our schools within the last year, the state has now come out with a plan that says, a mandate for lead testing. And the lead testing that we did within the last year is no good, no more. We have to do some more lead testing as per the state mandate, and that's going to cost about $18,000. So we recommend to the, recommend to the board that there's, just that the administration move forward with the lead testing as per the state program. We talked to the architect. Mr. Sam Jinny was on the phone. We were moving forward with our plans to provide some additional climate control cooling at HMS and ARRIS. Moving forward in the sense that we're going to get some, he's going to prepare some proposals for us to take a look at. So that's positive. Let's see. We're also moving forward with a plan to reimburse staff for property loss that was due to the mold remediation, also an issue at Wood Fern School.
Yes.
Wood Fern School. And that's taking, took some positive steps in that. We're going to be, but it's not done, so I can't talk about that yet. But our attorney is on it, and we're making very positive steps on the reimbursement for staff for property loss. We have some bids and RFQs for professional services that will go out for the, for the next year, for the next, for next year and the years after. These are for the architect of record, the environmental consultant, and for trash disposal. Okay? So that will, we recommend that we go out for a bid or, and/or RFQ for those as required. We took a look at a resolution being promoted by Franklin Township Schools, I believe, for having to do with charter schools. We took a look at that. We're going to refer that to the, to that resolution to the governance committee. That's more of a governance committee, we felt, item. So they're going to take a look at that when they meet. And I think I already mentioned that. I think that was it. And I already mentioned that Mr. Gallagher did come in and update us on the work done up to that time to fix the problems that we had on January 9th, and that were also ongoing as far as temperatures in the classrooms. That's it, operations committee. And let's have questions about this report or any report. Mr. Cooper?
I just want to add about the testing, about the lead, that we are seeking, the state has said that they will reimburse us for some of the costs, and we will be seeking that, so it's not all out of pocket.
Yeah, that there may be a possibility of recoup some of that, right? Yes. Yes, okay, so we are seeing. Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Any other questions on committee reports? Okay. So put that away. And what do we go to next?
Can we bring Mr. Gallagher back?
What? What's that?
Yes.
Duh! I'm sorry, I missed it.
Are you kidding me? There's air conditioning running right now.
Oh, oh, yeah. Is it running?
Yes, my nails are blue. I can't feel my knees.
Are you kidding me? We're freezing death over here. Make it quick. Let's get out of here.
Anybody have any scissors?
It's all the hot air in here.
It's fine until now.[861.13][861.13](LAUGHTER).
It must be, it must be Cas's equipment running too hot. Cas, cool that off. All right, so let's go to comments from the board and public. So first up, as we do every meeting from October through to the tentative budget and beyond, we seek input from the public on the budget. Before I, so if you have anything about the, if you have any, public, for the public, if you have any input on the budget, you can come up now. This is what we usually read before we have public input. We very much welcome and value input from the public. There are two times during board meetings where the public is invited to speak. One time is now. Not listed on tonight's agenda or new business, there'll be another, I'm sorry, for any item that is listed on tonight's agenda or new business, there'll be another public forum towards the end of the meeting about any topic. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but are rather offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or presiding board member or superintendent will address the comments. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring sessions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. All right, so I don't, seeing none for the budget, we'll go for any new business or items on the action agenda. New business or action agenda?
I think they're waiting for the board.
From the, from the board, any new business? Okay, so.
I just have a couple of questions, but I don't know if you want it on the new business or if you want me to save it till the end.
Is it about an item on the action agenda?
No.
Well, if it's new business, you can talk about it.
I can talk about it?
Yeah. If it's not an old business.
So just, just two, two different questions. First of all, so on my days off, I've been a substitute nurse at some of the local schools surrounding our, our district. And one question I was not able to help a student with is a child came to me hungry, and I went to the office, which was adjoining to the nurse's office, to ask them, you know, how do you, how do you address this matter? And unfortunately, they said the cafeteria was closed, it was past lunch, that they didn't have anything to give the student. And since I was just there half a day, I too didn't, I had nothing to give them. In that certain circumstance, what do we do when a student comes to the nurse and saying that they're hungry? I mean, do we have stuff for them? Because I was devastated.
I mean, after lunch, the child was hungry?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think the nurse is going to make decisions about whether or not the child needs to be fed, or, or the parent contacted, or whatnot. But we, you know, if a child needs to be fed, we'll make sure that we find a way to feed them.
So I guess my basic question is, I just want to make sure that all of our schools have resources for food to give children who are hungry. I mean, like, to me, that's just such a simple situation.
Well, yes. I mean, it's an interesting question about a child who's hungry after lunch. So did they not eat? I mean, it can generate some additional questions, but we have really extraordinary school nurses and administrators in the district that if they feel a child needs something, they go out and get it.
I mean, I just want, okay, because I just want to make sure that, you know, this can, we can solve this little problem, because unfortunately, during that time, I was not able to, and I felt defeated over something so, so simple as food. I mean, nobody should ever, ever be hungry. I mean, that is just something that's just so simple.
Yeah. And again, I don't know if there was a particular special need of the child. Those are decisions that would be made by the school nurse in real time with administrative support. But, you know, the people who work in our schools, if they have a problem, they resolve it, they'll fix it.
Okay. And then my second question is, due to all the cough, fever, flu, vomiting, diarrhea, what are we doing to make our, to sanitize our schools and classrooms? Because I know other districts are, on the weekends, are bringing teams of people in to disinfect everything, because, you know, our children are little germs.[1151.25][1151.25](LAUGHTER).
I wish Mr. Gallagher was still here. He could have, he could have talked to you about, about the cleanliness, but I'll defer to my colleague.
Yeah, I think, Ms. Bogachewski, what we'll do, I thank you for bringing it up. We have nothing that we've put into place currently, but I will talk to Mr. Gallagher. I know that there are times that we will bring in what we, they call it a deep cleaning. So they'll come in on the weekend, and they'll address, there's a protocol for that. I don't believe we've done it for any of our schools as of now for any particular situation. But thank you for bringing in our attention. What I will do is speak to Mr. Gallagher, and if there's anything we can do, we will do. And I think that, once you bring it to our attention, it's our obligation to go back, look, and see, follow Aramark's protocol, and kind of look, school by school, and think about the deep cleaning that they have.
Okay. And then also, if any teachers need any, you know, additional supplies, I mean, parents are more than willing to bring in, you know, I don't know, bottles of sanitizer, Kleenex, whatever you could possibly, you know, need, because I know it's really bad right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business from the board? All right, so I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Schiff for the action agenda.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel and related expenses, the HIB attached list, the IDEA fiscal year 17 allocation, family math sessions, overnight field trips, as listed, to approve the revised math curriculum as reported out of committee, and to approve the following policies and regulations for first reading, including the Americans with Disability Act, the Educational Stability for Children in Foster Care, Section 504 in the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, education of homeless students, and student records. All of these are updates to, to existing policies. Also, to approve the, to submit a grant application for, for pets in a particular classroom at the, in the high school preschool program, as was discussed in committee. Also, to approve the out-of-district placement as listed.
Okay, so this is for items 9.1 to 9.9. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, let's have a roll call.
Sure. Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Ms. Centafante?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
And Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, let's go on to HR.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of human resources, to, to approve a resolution, also to approve the retirements and resignations. Diane Kosik has been a special education teacher at Otten Road since 2002, who's retiring. Carmella Palatone, a lunch aide at Hillsborough Elementary School, has been with us since 1999. Margaret Schaefer, secretary of the Child Study Team, who has been with us since 1992. And Larry Schultz, who's one of our computer technicians, who's, who has been working with us since 1999. We, we thank those for their service to our district and our students. Also, to approve the resignations as listed, the revised leaves of absences, revised long-term substitutes, the contract changes, to approve the transfers and changes in assignments for next school year, as well as approving the leaves of absence as listed, and the appointments of teachers, long-term substitutes, instructional assistants and substitutes. And also to approve the student teachers, approve six-period coverage, preapproval of extra-period coverage, approval of extra-period coverage, and approval of group changes, and to approve a suspension of a staff member.
Okay, so for items 10.1 through 10.14, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, seeing none, let's have a roll call.
Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Ms. Centafante?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
And Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, Dr. Schiff.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations to approve the line-on and transfers, monthly bills list, the exception, the acceptance of a donation from donorschoose.org of a variety of weaving materials and other fabric dyes and textile dyes, et cetera. To approve the out-of-district placement as listed, and, and the ratification of the contract, which I think we're going to move separately.
Right. So let's, so to start, let's have a motion for items 11.1 through 11.4 only.
So moved.
Second, okay. Any, any discussion on those items? Okay, let's have a roll call for 11.1 through 11.4.
Okay, Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Ms. Centafante?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
And Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, thank you. So 11.5 is the motion to ratify the agreement between the Hillsborough Township Board of Education and the Hillsborough Education Association. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, okay. Discussion, I'm going to start with Mr. Kins.
If I can, just to, to give a summary of the, of the negotiated contract with the HEA, both for the board members and for the public. This contract is retroactive to July 1st, 2016, through June 30th of June, June 30th, 2019. From the committee on the board side, we had myself as the chair, Mr. Gillette, and Mrs. Centafante, and Mr. Dudda as members of the negotiations committee. The HEA membership has ratified the contract on Thursday, January 26, 2017, so last week, with regard to changes that were negotiated for the contract. There were salary increases. This salary increase is for the entire contract, so that includes both what we call increments, which is as teachers or as employees move on in their tenure, they typically receive an increase in pay, and then also for longevity, which are payments that are made at specific anniversary dates. The common, the salary increases for year 2016-17, again, this is retroactive to July 1st, is 2.65%, 2.5% for year, for year two, which is 2017-18, and 2.5% for year three, which is 2018 to 19. The Somerset County averages for other contracts for year one is 2.56%, 2.64% for year two, and 2.85% for 2018-19. State averages were 2.82, 2.8, and 2.85, respectively. Our district continues to have very competitive starting and average teaching salaries, and are at the top of Somerset County. For health benefits, first year, again, 2016-17, is to continue and complete fourth year of implementation of Chapter 78. This is at tier four. So, and Chapter 78 was implemented into law a number of years ago, which required increased payments of health benefits by state and, and teachers, public teachers. Two contracts ago, the, the 2010 to 13 contract, members paid 6%, 12%, and 18% of benefits. This, and then the prior contract, which, which finished June 30th of 2016, was for tier, for Chapter 78. The, the payment structure for that was at an accelerated rate. So on the negotiations that we had from the prior contract, that started at tier two and finished at tier four. In this contract, the first year is at tier four, again, completing four years of implementation of Chapter 78. Years two is going to have, we split it up between certificated staff and non-certificated staff. So for the certificated staff for year two, they will pay a flat 20% of the benefits. And for the non-certificated staff, they will be paying the tier, Chapter 78 tier four payment structure, which varies based on their salary, on their, on their salaries. So it can range anywhere from 5% to 35%. Non-certificated staff will remain at tier four with a cap at 20%. In the final year of the contract, for certificated staff, they will pay 21% of health benefits, and the non-certificated staff will be at tier four with a cap at 21%. This year, at the beginning of the year, we went private in terms of health insurance, and with that, the, that contribution includes not only the, the primary health benefits, but also dental and vision. There is a health benefit opt-out, which is a waiver, so for those employees who choose not to be, not to receive insurance, health benefits from the district, they are provided incentive, which is a, a portion of that, of what the, the board would pay. That will continue in the first year of contract, and then in years two and three, there is a reduction and limitation on those waivers. With regard to long-term substitute stipends and, and health benefits, in the prior contract, they were paid at the same rate that... contract, they were paid, uh, at the same rate, um, that, um, uh, employees who are on the tenure track were paid. It was prorated per day, um, and that was at the first step of the, the salary guide for teachers. Um, we have negotiated a per diem rate and, and health insurance coverage, uh, that is differentiated from, uh, the full-time teachers. Uh, with regard to coaches' stipends, um, we have increased, um, the, um, the stipends for those, uh, for those coaches, and it was done in two ways. One was, uh, for the, the level of, of stipend, uh, is based on, uh, a categorization of the team, and there are 13 different levels. Um, level one is at the highest rate, which is usually for the, for the largest programs, and then it goes down to level 13. So a combination between increasing the stipend, um, for that top-tier, uh, level, we've also contracted, um, the number of, um, levels from 13 to seven. So, uh, a combination between, um, that increase and then also that, that collapse in bringing up of, of, uh, those teams, uh, have yielded an increase in the coaches' stipends. With regard to class advisors, uh, we have added 10 advisor positions at, at, um, HHS. That actually includes, I think, 14 positions, because they're, one of the positions, there are actually, um, five, uh, it covers, uh, is, is, uh, provided by five teachers. Uh, and then we've also added a, uh, position at the bursar, uh, at the middle school level for the bursar, and that, that position will receive a stipend. For the calendar, we were, uh, successful in removing the, the last, uh, reference, um, to the start and the end of the school year, uh, and this enables us, um, some flexibility in terms of the calendar, uh, in terms of when we start school, whether it's a student day or an in-service day. Uh, and again, that is to provide us more flexibility with the calendar, um, for either vacation days when we start and end the year, or also to give us flexibility with regard to inclement, inclement weather days. Um, we've then made, um, changes with regard to language, uh, in terms of notice for subcontracting, professional learning committees, uh, sixth and seventh period coverage, personal days, um, sick leave notification for custodians, maintenance mechanics, um, we've, and then also incorporated, um, codified language, um, from prior sidebar agreements or from, uh, rulings with regard to the sick leave bank, um, recognition, and, um, and then with regard to accumulated sick leave, um, we've, uh, we've increased those to match, um, the state maximum, uh, which we've done in the past, again, for the certificated, um, employees, and then we've increased the same percentage across the rest of the membership. Uh, and then also had clarification with regard to administrative processes, such as, uh, communication via electronic versus paper, other communications, work year, uh, vacation accrual, and time for mandatory training. So, um, with that, um, we have done some analysis in terms of the, the cost of the contract, and, um, we believe that it is a, a fiscally reasonable, um, agreement, um, as with every budget and with every contract, we have to do prioritization, but we feel that we will be able to, uh, to manage that with the current constraints. Uh, from a timeline perspective, everybody knows that this has been a, a timely process. Um, we, uh, had our initial meeting with the HEA on January 5th, uh, and had a number of meetings through May 17th, uh, when, uh, an impasse was declared. Uh, May 31st, we had a state mediator that was assigned and met with that, uh, both with the HEA, our negotiating team, and the state-appointed mediator, uh, in July and August. Um, we then were able to resolve differences with a direct, um, negotiations, uh, meeting, which resulted in the tentative agreement. Again, that was in October 4th. Then, um, after that, in November, we had the proposed salary guides from, uh, the HEA, um, which we had analysis performed on and, and, and received, uh, positive reviews for that. Um, and then winter break came, and then this past month, we've been doing finalization of language, um, just to make sure that, uh, all the, all the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed. Um, all prior contracts, including this one, were fairly negotiated by representatives, uh, from each party and freely ratified by both, by both parties. Um, each side presented their proposals on how to change the contract, and then negotiated with the context of those proposals. Um, so with that, on behalf of the, um, on the board negotiation committee, I'd like to, uh, recommend our unanimous approval for ratification by the board. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kins. Uh, any other discussion from, uh, board members? I, I think I, I probably said this at a previous meeting, but I also want to thank Mr. Kins, uh, and Mrs. Centefonte, and, uh, Mr. Dudda, um, also, uh, or the assistant business administrator who was with us previously, uh, Mr. Matt Bolton, and also, um, our new assistant business administrator, um, Ashley Zalinski, uh, who, um, is not here tonight, but she, uh, gave, um, gave us some help afterward, after the, um, in the past month or so, uh, getting some of the numbers together. So, uh, thank you all very much for that.
One.
Oh, and Mr., oh, yeah, where is he? I almost forgot. The other member of our team was, uh, uh, Mr. Michael Volpe, who helped us with, uh, that too. So, you're right, uh, one thing, uh, Mr. Kins said, you said, you said it was a timely process. I think you meant to say time-consuming process, because I don't think it was particularly timely.
Time when that isn't fast or efficient.
Since we, since, uh, you, uh, the negotiations team, our negotiations team start meeting together to, um, to plan in November of the previous year. So we're just coming to January 30th, I think, now, so this is quite, quite a, well, it's about 14 months.
Yeah. Yeah, also, just to, just to, to comment, um, you know, we've, we've been through negotiations with the HEA a few times. Mr. Gillette, this is, this was his fourth contract. This was my third contract. This was your first, but you've, you negotiated with other...
Other units.
With the other units within the district, and then we had, um, Mr. Dudda to give a, a fresh perspective. Um, it is an adversarial process, that's the nature of it, and I just want to recognize, um, the HEA negotiations team. Um, even though it was adversarial, it was, uh, professional, uh, and so, a lot of long hours, not only on our part, but on their part as well. So, um, you know, I'm pleased to, to say that we've got a tentative agreement that, um, that we're going to present to the board for ratification and that the HEA has ratified last week. So, thank you.
Mr. Kins, you're correct. It, there has to be a, um, serious negotiation from both sides to keep the integrity of the process. That's what the public expects. If we don't negotiate hard, that not only hurts our image, but also hurts the image of the, uh, of the HEA. We have to negotiate, and likewise the same. If they didn't negotiate hard, that would not only hurt their inch, but also hurt us too. They want to see us both negotiating hard. So, uh, with that, um, I think we'll do a roll call.
Sure. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Oh, wait, what?
Motion.
Oh, I, oh, we, I, we had a motion.
We do.
That was the discussion.
We do.
Yeah, so, yeah, I know what I'm doing on this part. All right, roll call.
Sure. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Centefonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Mr. Trujillo?
Yes.
And Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Congratulations, we have a contract. All right. So now, we're, we're up to, oh, do I have to read the, um, whereas?
Uh, no, we're not going to.
No, we, we're good.
That was a part of the motion.
The board just, just, uh, just approved it. Okay, we did it, all right. Um, old business from the, uh, public. Okay, I'm going to wait, wait a second if they, if they want, he wants to come up. Yep.
Good evening, Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, as well as Laurel Drive. Um, just had a question regarding one of the points that was reported out. Um, I thank the board as well and their negotiations team, um, but it was mentioned that there was the removal of language relating to the calendar that would allow for a possible start prior to September, it seemed to allude to. Um, I would just like clarification on that, please.
Yeah, sure.
It's in, um, it's in 8.2.1. It was something we negotiated, if you recall, about, I think it was to do with nurses. If I recall, I don't have the, um, contract language in front of me.
I do.
Yeah, it's, it's item 8.2.1. Where the reference to, to, uh, June and September were removed. And we were, we were very transparent about our proposal to change or to remove that from the contract.
So that was just for the nurses, so they can get all of the input done before the school year begins, not the school year beginning?
This is the only place in the contract where the start and finish of the, of the calendar is mentioned.
That's actually not correct, because Article 23.1 and Article 24.1 in the current contract, which were not changed, still stipulate September 1st to June 30th.
We discussed adding those days for the nurses so that their work could be completed before the school year began. We were not saying that the school year would start for the rest of the staff before then.
So noted, thank you.
So as a point of correction, that is going to be changed from the report?
Uh, I will follow up on it at the next meeting. Okay?
Thank you.
So does that mean us?
Nothing.
We've, we've ratified the contract as it is.
We've ratified the contract.
So that language is in the contract, and we'll see what the implications are.
Old business from the, uh, board?
Uh, I just wanted... You just ratified a contract because of a dispute?
Well, we can't, we can't nego, we can't negotiate and talk about dispute in public now. We'll, we'll have our attorney take a look at it, I'm sure.
It's a difference, it's a difference of interpretation.
So you guys can work that out?
Yep.
And that's legal?
Yep.